Can you unmute quickly, just for a sound check, please? Can she hear us?
Hello?
Hi, Counselor.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. That sounds good.
I call to order the regular meeting of the Lakewood City Council on October 28th, 2024 at 7:08 PM. To connect with a council meeting online, please use one of the following links at LakewoodSpeaks.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. For anyone wishing to submit public comment online this evening, you may post comments of any length to LakewoodSpeaks.org. It's our online public platform that will be available tomorrow through tomorrow at 10:00 AM. Also, on the topics that we're discussing this evening, you'll find that Lakewood Speaks has supporting information as well as a couple of staff presentations as well. So as you're following along, if you've got questions, there's more information available. And with that, I will go ahead and hand it over to the Clerk. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Strom.
Here.
Counselor Olvers, absent. Mia Guerrero.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Charzai.
Here.
Labir.
Here.
Nystrom.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Anne Sinks.
Here.
Mayor Strom, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And for those who are able to stand, I'll ask you to do so now to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. After we've completed that, please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God of the which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, infinite and eternal.
All of the members of City Council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2 Prince B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The City Council is empowered by Charter 7.2 Prince B to agree by unanimous vote, excluding the member at issue, to excuse any member of the Council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal, financial, or business interest. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. So tonight, we have a very special opportunity. I'm excited to welcome a hometown hero here to Lakewood, Beatrice Hats. And we'll get into a little bit more in a minute, but Beatrice is a bronze medalist from the 2024 Paralympic Games in Paris. I could not be more thrilled to bring this forward this evening or to read this out to everybody and present this to you this evening for the role that you've played as a role model in our community and the inspiration that you have imparted upon many whom you will never even know. So with that, I will invite you to join me up here at the lectern, and we have a proclamation to read. It's my new discovery today. This site is more fun. All right. So whereas Beatrice Hats, a proud native of Lakewood, Colorado, has demonstrated extraordinary athletic ability, resilience, and determination throughout her career as a Paralympian, whereas Beatrice grew up excelling in a wide variety of sports, including softball, basketball, soccer, karate, skiing, and track and field, always rising above the challenges and pushing herself to achieve new heights, whereas her hard work and dedication earned her the title of 2018 U.S. Paralympics Track and Field High School Female Athlete of the Year, setting her on a path towards international success, and whereas Beatrice represented Team USA at the Paralympic Games in Tokyo 2020 and Paris 2024, where she achieved a major career milestone by earning her first Paralympic medal, a bronze, in the long jump T-64 women's event. And whereas the Paralympic Games are a global celebration of athletic excellence, inclusion, and perseverance, bringing together approximately 4,400 athletes from around the world and inspiring millions with an estimated 15.4 million viewers tuning in to watch the Paris 2024 Games. And whereas the city of Lakewood is committed to building an inclusive and supportive community, celebrating the achievements of individuals like Beatrice and Beatrice Hats, who inspires all of us to pull, push past limitations and pursue excellence, and whereas Beatrice serves as a role model for both current and future generations, exemplifying the power of resilience and the importance of representation on the world stage, and making the city of Lakewood incredibly proud. Now therefore, on behalf of the City Council and the people of the city of Lakewood, I, Wendy Strom, Mayor of the city of Lakewood, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim October 28th as Beatrice Hats Appreciation Day. All right, perfect, right here. One, two, three. Gotcha. Family, did you want to come up for a photo? All righty, perfect. One, two, three. Gotcha.
Thank you so much.
All right. This is the first point in tonight's meeting where the public is invited to address the City Council on items that are not on this evening's agenda. This initial period of public comment allows for up to 10 speakers to provide comment on any matter other than an agenda item, and we'll prioritize those with special needs speaking during this initial period of public comment. Does require signing up to speak with the city clerk in advance of the meeting. In this initial period, there is no pooling of time. The goal, I want to just take a moment and remind everybody that the goal is really here in public comment to create an environment that is welcoming to all stakeholders. And with that, we'll ask that as people are sharing their concerns, that we respect the decorum of the council chambers and no audible signs of support or discourse, things like that. And this is our opportunity to listen to you. So for those of you that are here and would like to have a dialogue exchange, there are other venues for that. Feel free to reach out to your counselors, to staff, by phone or email, counselors, including myself, by phone or email. But tonight is a listening session only, so we're here to hear you. And a reminder, so LakewoodSpeaks.org is actually our online platform that's available to anybody that wants to submit public comment on agenda items or non-agenda items. It does go in the public record of our meeting minutes after the event. So verbatim, if there's anything that you want to include in public comment, you can also submit your information through LakewoodSpeaks.org, or if you'd rather do that, instead of getting up and speaking in front of people, that's an option as well. So with that, oh, and if you have handouts, please leave them with the city clerk, and the clerk will distribute those to the council after tonight's meeting. And we'll go ahead, we do tonight in our initial session, have two signed up to speak. First, we have Bradley Bruce, and then second, Connie, is that Reddick? Connie has.
Connie Reddick.
Okay. So Bradley Bruce, you're up first, and we'll get your clock started. When you come forward, we ask that you will state your name and address, or name and ward.
It's blank.
Oh.
Okay. You just tell me when to stop. Okay. Hi, my name's Brad Bruce. I live in Ward Two. I am here to ask the Lakewood City Council to pass a resolution condemning the use of American weapons in Palestine and Lebanon. As we sit here, we enter the fifth day, sorry, the 25th day of Israel's accelerated ethnic cleansing campaign in the northern Gazan Strip. 1,000 people, mostly women and children, have been confirmed to have been killed by Israeli forces in the last three weeks in the north alone. That brings the total number of confirmed dead in Palestine to well over 43,000, and the number of wounded to well over 100,000. Imagine that for the last month, you did not have access to food, water, soap, medicine, or shelter, all while Israeli airstrikes continue to rain death and destruction on you constantly. Last week, Israeli forces initiated and completed a siege of Kamal Adwan Hospital, which is located in the north. This is one of the last functioning hospitals in Gaza and the only hospital in Gaza that specializes in pediatric care. During the siege, videos of Israeli tanks surrounding and then opening fire on the hospital began circulating, along with images of every male hospital staff member being stripped of their clothing, led out of the hospital, blindfolded, and handcuffed into trucks. The whereabouts of these hospital staffers are unknown at this time. The increased aggression in the northern Gaza has been accompanied by continued killing in southern Gaza, the occupied West Bank, Lebanon, and now Syria. This includes continued strikes against civilians and UN forces in Lebanon, medical workers in Syria, and the killing of farmers in the West Bank attempting to harvest this year's olive crop. Last week, a letter was released by 65 House Democrats urging the Biden administration to push to allow, push Israel to allow unimpeded media access within Gaza, the absolute bare minimum, and something that has not been permitted in well over a year due to Israeli denying, Israel denying it. Unfortunately, Representative Patterson's signature was missing from this letter. The United States has financed 70% of Israel's genocide on the Palestinian people. Over $22.76 billion tax dollars have been sent to Israel in the last year. Like I always say, I do not expect the City Council to fix international issues, but the horrors enacted by the Israeli government are only possible because our tax dollars are being siphoned out of our community and put towards the financing of killing random people on the opposite side of the planet. Every single tax dollar spent on weapons and munitions is a tax dollar not spent on improving the lives of your constituents. These are weapons and munitions produced sometimes right here on the front range. These issues are closer to our community than we realize. We could be putting our tax dollars toward better schools, infrastructure, or literally anything else to improve the lives of Lakewood residents. And while you have constituents sleeping on the streets, I would expect you all to be exploring any funding sources to ensure your constituents don't suffer, including pushing our federal representatives to divest from the American and Israeli war machine. We are funding a genocide while Americans at home suffer. It is obvious that our federal representatives do not care. They must be forced to care about these issues, and I hope that you will help force them by using your combined amplified voice by passing a resolution condemning the use of American weapons in Palestine and Lebanon. Thank you.
One second left. That was perfectly timed. Connie.
Good evening. I'm Connie Reddick from Ward Three. And I'm coming to you because my health is deteriorating. They haven't changed or fixed. I have to have medicine put in a refrigerator. My refrigerator doesn't work. My stove doesn't work. Since Thanksgiving of last year, the door fell off. Nothing's been done about it. I didn't have any way that I could even wash dishes because they won't come and fix the dishwasher or disposal underneath the sink. So one of my caregivers had to at least fix that so that we could wash dishes. They took the thermostat off of my wall so that I wouldn't know how hot or how cold it was in my apartment, which is, all of that is totally illegal because this is a federal building. Can you hear me? And it's a federal building, and they're not abiding by the warranty of building law, the ADA law. I am in a non-ADA apartment. My refrigerator, my stove is not ADA, and they're broken. And we have talked to them several times in the last three months and since Thanksgiving about the stove, about the refrigerator. And they say, oh, we're going to get another one from another building to bring into your apartment, but they still haven't done that. And because the mayor wanted to be over Metro Rest Solution, something, or I don't know, if we can get together with the mayor, the commissioners, and Metro's solution to resolve this problem, because my health is deteriorating, and nobody, nobody should live under safe, healthy conditions. I mean, I didn't have air conditioning, and I was deathly ill. I got heat stroke, and they did that so I wouldn't know how hot it was in the apartment. There are several things. I have come here for eight years telling you with 15 different letters from my doctors, and why not one of you have done anything or any way to try to help me. So I would like to know, we, we both choose in so that you would help the community and So I would like to know, we, we vote you in so that you would help the community, and I'm not part of the community or something, that my voice doesn't mean anything. I would really like every single one of you to get involved and do something about this. And I'm not the only one that's going through this, so imagine, I can speak up, but there are people in the building that are having the same problems, and they haven't been able to come over here because they're ill and can't speak up on their own behalf. But it's not only me that this is happening to, and I think it's very important that people start getting involved because they're breaking the warranty of having.
Ms. Reddick, your time is up.
Attorney abuse ruling, so I want you to do something about it. I would like you to get together with me and the commissioner, and the ward people in my ward, because.
Ms. Reddick, your time is up, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Robb, I only have two up here. We do have a little more space if we've got more speakers on non-agenda.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. We weren't sure, you know, given the rules, if that should be considered under initial public comment?
I'm fine with it, since we've only got two.
Okay. Carla Seboias? Sebaios, thank you.
Hi, I'm, I'm here speaking on Connie's behalf, on her caretaker's.
Yep, either one, yep.
I'm her caretaker, and just for the short amount of time that I've been caretaking for her, I do see the bullying, I see the, the, there's no morale in the building, I see that most of these individuals don't have any other outlet, you know, it can be very negative, negative environment is what I pick up on, like, there's nothing, you know, positive there, and then plus, in her unit, when I'm caretaking her, I don't see a thermostat, I don't see a working oven, exactly what she's complaining about, and that's not a livable condition for anybody, nobody whatsoever, so I just would like you guys to consider, you know, if this was your grandma, or your mother, or, you know, just your family member, that you'd really take that into consideration. She's not just, you know, speaking in the air, you know, she's speaking because this is a true issue that she's having to deal with on a daily basis, and I see it for myself. So I just wanted to state that.
Thank you.
That is all I have, Mayor.
Okay. All right, moving on to the next item this evening is our consent agenda. First of all, question for City Council, do you have anyone that wishes to remove any items from this evening's consent agenda? Seeing none, will the clerk please read the consent agenda into the record?
The consent agenda is comprised of the following items. Item seven, Resolution 2024-58, authorizing the city manager to enter an, into an amended intergovernmental agreement with the Mile High Flood District and the city and county of Denver for a major drainageway plan and a flood hazard area delineation report for South Lakewood Gulch. Item eight, Ordinance 2024-29, declaring the intent of the city of Lakewood to acquire interest in property for public purposes for drainageway stabilization in Lakewood Gulch downstream of Welch Street, and authorizing negotiations with property owners, acceptance of conveyance instruments, and condemnation of real property interests subject to further council approval.
Okay, thank you. And I do have a few, well, I guess, two, including three others for pool time this evening to speak on the consent agenda. So we'll go ahead and have you all come up first, if we could start with Luke Godwin.
Hello, I'm Luke Godwin. Good evening, thank you, City Councilors, for allowing me to speak. I would like to start by saying that are not opposed to the erosion mitigation of Lakewood Gulch, the homeowners offered a temporary easement, granting quarterly access, but the city denied the offer. Landowners on viewpoint would like an alternative plan that doesn't include clearcutting the trees, a permanent easement disturbing the wildlife, and a written agreement that the pond will not be removed in the future. Please see Exhibit Zero, easement map. The new easement covers much more property area on each property, including an area on the property owned by Sandra Ferguson. As of yesterday, October 27th, she was unaware of the plans to obtain the easement on her property. The city of Lakewood has not had direct contact with her, but instead has spoken to her tenant. She is opposed to the current plan and supports an alternative erosion plan as well. Please see Exhibit One, pictures one through seven. I'd like, I'd like to show you the pictures of our beloved creek, provide insight in the layout and vegetation that we're speaking about tonight. You able to pull those up? So these are our kids playing in the current creek currently. I'm sorry, did I say I was part of Ward One, right? So then if you skip to the next pictures, you can kind of see some of the vegetation that we currently have on our own property that we purchased, and all the beautiful trees that we have. So you can keep scrolling through those and I'll continue. On April 10th, the owners of Viewpoint Drive requested an onsite meeting with the city of Lakewood, Mile High Flood District, and Lowen Engineering to discuss the proposed danger drainage upgrades for Lakewood Gulch behind our homes, citing specific questions and concerns. On April 22nd, during the onsite meeting, we were, we were informed that a substantial number of trees would be removed to allow excavator access to the creek bed. We requested a 3D visual of the plans to help us better understand the plans, and they were declined. The majority of our concerns from April 10th email were not addressed. On May 1st, Lucy East, Lakewood Engineers, stated that this is a priority for Lakewood to obtain easements along all drainageways, and the project will provide an aesthetically pleasing area for us and our families to enjoy. Aesthetically pleasing is very subjective. Our idea of aesthetically pleasing is a natural creek with well-stravered trees, natural growth, and a well-balanced ecosystem. These pictures are the ones that they sent us of an example of what it would like after the work is done, and there's zero established trees, it's just shrubs, basically. Hence, that's why we purchased our homes on Lakewood. She also stated these easements are typically donated by homeowners. Our extensive research indicates that obtaining easements without payment is extremely uncommon. She further warned that intimate domain could be used if we couldn't reach an agreement. We were shocked by this statement of intimate domain, especially since we had not received detailed plans, and just started speaking about the project. If you see picture two is a comparable project, so I think that's what we just looked at. On May 1st, Spencer Curtis sent pictures of comparable project, which included pictures of a creek with boulders and no well-established trees nor shade. As you can see, the picture is vastly different from the pictures of our creek. On June 13th, landowners sent an email to city of Lakewood outlining the concerns and questions that had not been addressed by the city, possible removal of the pulled pond, the impact of developments on West 8th and 9th place on the volume of water entering the creek, highly impacting the erosion. So most of the water is coming from a development on 8th that was not properly built so that the water could be retained. It's all flowing down the street and going through Ava's property, and then into the creek. June 8th, Ray Hill, city engineer, stated the timing of the tree removal will be carefully panned. To minimize impacts on wildlife, trees can be preserved and will be protected. We asked the city if they had consulted environmentalists or biologists, and they said no. Ray stated after discussion.
Mr. Godwin, can you pause for just a second? Were we on a 10-minute or a 3-minute?
Or, I, I didn't know that he's actually pulling time, and is that right?
No, she's pulling time, I'm on a 3-minute.
I was pulling time, but his name got called first, so we just started at the top of our presentation, we didn't know what else to do.
Okay.
Because it wasn't established that he was getting 3 or 10 minutes, so.
So you get 3, or, I mean, it's totally up to you, 13 minutes in total if you guys want to decide how to work it.
Yeah, I mean, if that's 3 is over, then she can finish.
Okay.
Is the 3 over?
It is.
Well, but if, I mean, if we're going to do 13 all in.
Well, then she can come up and finish.
Okay, that's.
Because she was originally supposed to do it all.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, welcome to the business of pinching.
We were like, just start at the top, we don't know.
Yeah, thank you, apologize about the confusion. We're getting used to new rules and everything, and, yeah.
We appreciate the flexibility. Okay. Ray stated after discussion onsite, the design team had agreed to leave the existing pulled pond. The culvert under Welch has a limited lifespan and will need future replacement. The culvert project does not include replacing the culvert. On July 1st, we asked why the erosion around the culvert was not included in the plan. We highlighted our concerns and removal of the pond in the future, given the city's authority to hold easements. We still have not received an answer. Ray stated the Lakewood Storm Management Utility is aware of the local drainage issues upstream. The stormwater management project will be prioritized and scheduled in relation to all other local drainage needs. We have not received an update on the scheduling of this. Via City Council, Lanners responded to further address the following concerns and questions. Is there a professional environmentalist or wildlife biologist involved? Have there been a study regarding the impact of heavy equipment destroying the ecosystem in the creek? Considering we are very close to Wilchester Tree Grant Park, we need a plan that will have the least disturbance to the wildlife. It appears the city has chosen a plan that is most convenient, without considering other options or consulting professionals about wildlife preservation. We also request, we also requested to please be alerted as soon as the city council meeting was scheduled with the city regarding permission for this project, and we did not receive communication on this. We found out from just a neighbor. It was very, it's very noteworthy that we also highlight that there has been work completed at the Wilchester Tree Park in the past, and they were, they were able to keep the trees and maintain the ecosystem. September 12th, via City Council, Lanners sent an email to the city of Lakewood. We have consulted the following professionals, Dr. Ellen Wool, a fluvial geomorphologist, researcher, and university distinguished professor in the Geo Science Department of CSU with over 35 years' experience. Dr. Dave Rosin, hydrologist, geomorphologist, researcher, teacher, and consultant of over 50 years of field experience. Both professionals agree that the current plan should not be implemented, and that it would actually be counterproductive to the flood and erosion control. David Rosin stated that, I quote, "Cut down, cutting down the trees for the sole purpose of access is not something we would ever do." Please see Exhibit Three, an email from the professor, Dr. Ellen Wool, highlighting that there are alternatives. During this time, we also requested a second opinion from a qualified firm. On September 23rd, Lucy East stated that we had added, they have added a geomorphology consulting firm to the scope of the project to provide their analysis of the area and to, and to the, and to the proposed design, and that a meeting would be held in early November. We were not informed of this meeting. On September 24th, homeowners requested involvement in the selection process of the geomorphology firm, and included six qualified firms suggesting, suggested by Dr. Wool, highlighting no financial interest in any restoration firm. October 1st, Lucy responded denying our request, stating that Ecological Resource Consultants, ERC, was pre-selected by Mile High Flood District. Lucy stated the flood plan along the stretch of gulch is adequately conveyed through the channel. The existing master plan for this gulch does not identify any upstream improvements within JFCO. The existing culvert under Welch was installed with the drop to dissipate energy and was not installed at the level of the stream bed. The original design for our project showed improvements to the outfall, but the request of the homeowners, this has been removed from the project to limit disturbance. We would like to highlight the discrepancy here. Ray Hill previously reported the culvert was not included in the original design. Then Lucy East later stated that it wasn't included due to homeowner request. To be clear, the homeowner request, the homeowner did not request the culvert area to not be included in the plan, but simply requested confirmation that the pond beneath the culvert would remain undisturbed. It is an essential element to the ecosystem for the creek. The mallards return annually to the pond to hatch their offspring. Please see Exhibit 4.1 and 4.2, videos illustrating overland flow into the gulch. So as you can see, the water's flowing into Ava's yard. And then the stormwater there is so small that it doesn't flow, doesn't flow, it just flows over, and right here, you can see it's flowing over. If you want to skip to the next video. This is the water flowing into Ava's yard, all the way across, you can keep playing it. Into the next neighbor's yard, then almost into my yard, and then into the creek. Thank you. Lucy states the bank erosion failure is due to the slope of the existing channel and the failure of the downstream drop structure. The erosion is not caused by local overland flow over vegetated areas before entering the gulch. As you can see in the videos, it is clear water flowing, it is clear that water's flowing over vegetated areas before entering into the gulch. This water flow covered two backyards before entering the gulch. Please see Exhibit Five, which is a letter postmarked on the 15th that Lanners did not receive until October 21st. On October 10th, homeowners received a surprise visit from the city of Lakewood, Lowen Engineering, ERC and ERO. During this visit, we asked about the number of trees to be removed from the current plan, and they specified that a tree means a diameter of 6 inches or greater, meaning even smaller trees and shrubs would be removed that are not identified in the current plan. We are very concerned at this, as it sounds like a clearcutting situation. It is also noteworthy that David Lowen from Lowen Engineering stated that ERC was brought out to assess the gulch in order to, and I quote, "analyze more of the existing conditions to confirm that there isn't a better way to stabilize the lateral banks of the channel without removing as many trees as we currently are suggesting, and to just currently solidify the current plan." This indicates to homeowners that the city of Lakewood and Lowen Engineering are not summoning a second opinion with an open mind, but instead intend to just justify and solidify the current plan. We are confident in Dr. Wool's input regarding these alternatives. In closing, we would like to state the personal impact that this has on our lives. Please see Exhibit Six, the tribal citizen cards of the Cherokee Nation. My children and I, who are nourished by the creek, and are registered citizens of the Cherokee Nation. My neighbor Ava was raised in the Native American Church. My people's land was stolen, and we had to buy it back, and now it's being seized again. My people believe that we are interconnected with nature, and that the living, and that all living things have spirits, including the trees and water that give us life. We have no right to treat the trees, and wildlife is non-entities. We are destroying the earth by polluting the waters, clearcutting the trees, and destroying wildlife habitats. This will not only impact the owners on viewpoint, but all of our humanity. We have to learn how to respect the environment and how to make things better, not worse. We kindly request that the City Council reject the ordinance due to the inadequate plan design details and failure to consider biodiversity and wildlife. Additionally, the permanent easement proposed would diminish our land for which we currently pay taxes, and will continue to do so after the easements are established. Furthermore, we urge the city to collaborate closely with landowners and City Council on the design, as well as to hire a natural stream restoration firm to complete the design. We thank you so much for your time and for listening as to us tonight.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else here to speak to the consent agenda this evening? All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and may I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
Mayor Strom, I move for, I move to order all ordinances introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearing set for the date included in the ordinance, and for adoption of resolutions, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second. Okay, thank you. And we do not have staff presentations scheduled for this evening. There are two that are available on Lakewood Speaks, and we do have Max Kirschbaum here from Public Works Department for counsel that has questions. That there's a resolution. Do we have any counsel questions? Okay, I have Counselor Nystrom, Counselor Sinks, and then Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have an opportunity to go up there and look at this location and see firsthand what is at risk here. I have some serious concerns about what's proposed, and I would like to see more detail in terms of the plan. And to the point made by the residents, we can't keep clearcutting trees. There are other ways we could go about handling this, and I also am interested in what is being proposed to address the upstream problem. You know, the water flowing down the street into these people's yards, you know, that's untenable, and it's not acceptable. And I'm also, you know, again, very concerned about what, what is going to be left behind after we clearcut these trees. we clear-cut these trees. There is wildlife that will be impacted, shade that will be lost, mature trees are valuable, invaluable, actually. And this is not, to me, a proposal that shows that we're listening and valuing the natural environment and valuing the people that will be impacted by this. So I really would like to see and understand a little bit more detail and why some of the recommendations that have been made by outside parties are not being taken into account, or so it appears.
I have a point of order, which is whether or not we are speaking to the resolution or to the ordinance. I recognize that we have the full consent agenda, but typically how that has worked is that we have a consent agenda, and yes, we accept comment from the public on the consent agenda, and we are able to ask questions about the consent agenda, but specifically required to not speak to a first reading ordinance?
Would you like to clarify which one you're speaking to? I felt like it was the resolution, but...
Sorry, yes, it is for the resolution.
I believe, because I'd need to double-check the maps, but I believe that the comments that we just heard pertain to the ordinance?
Point of information, that's my understanding as well. I mean, we're talking about acquiring easements, and I mean, the resolution is about an IGA to pursue, to pursue a bunch of flood mapping, right? That's different than the ordinance, which is about moving forward, this easement thing. So I totally agree with Counselor Maigh-Gerro. This seems to be a matter on ordinance on first reading.
Mr. Kirschbaum, or I don't know if Mr. Hill, but maybe you can explain to council, peel these two apart?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Max Kirschbaum, Public Works Director. I'd like Ray to comment. Ray Hill, the city engineer for Capital Projects and Utilities, to further comment in a moment, but it seems to me like the comments that you heard this evening and Counselor Nystrom's comments pertain to the first reading and not to the resolution. The resolution is merely in agreement with, in the form of an IGA with Mile High Flood District for the Lakewood Gulch as defined in the map. The map and the presentation, it was in the materials that were provided to council. Ray, you want to continue with that?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ray Hill, City Engineer, Capital Projects and Utilities. Director Kirschbaum stated that correctly. The resolution is related to an IGA with Mile High Flood District and the city and county of Denver for flood mapping. They will ultimately come out with studies called a flood hazard delineation area and a second study that is a master drainage way plan. The ordinance before you is also on Lakewood Gulch, specifically the area downstream of Welch Street, which is the project that is focused on maintenance within that drainage way. That project is also in partnership with Mile High Flood District.
Thank you. So a vote on the consent agenda, which would be the one and only vote that we get on the resolution, does not impact the questions that council may have reflecting from public comment this evening. Is that correct?
I believe those are two different issues.
They're both on the consent agenda, so it will move the first reading forward to the public hearing where we can then really have this discussion. And I think obviously the comments are incredibly important and necessary, but we and nor the public are meant to discuss first reading ordinances. I think, like, these would need to... First of all, this level of discussion, I don't know if it is appropriate for a consent agenda specifically, but, so I think we would have pulled it apart. But I also, the reason that we didn't is because we're not meant to talk about that item.
I understand that. It's unclear to me, they are very much similar. So if we're clear that we're voting only on the IGA that does not impact the project that our residents are here for tonight, I think that's what council needs to understand on the vote that they're making. And to your point, yes, then we come back to the table and have more of a conversation or an actual conversation for the second hearing of the ordinance.
But we are voting on both.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just to provide a little clarity for all of council, there are two items on the consent. One is a resolution. It has a broader scope. The ordinance, which it seems that most of the discussion this evening, is more specific to the project that the residents were speaking to. It is a first reading item and not normally considered for public discussion since the action this evening is simply setting it for publication. Hopefully that helps.
Council, do we feel clear on what we are and are not voting on?
Point of information, I guess I just want to make one more point of information, and this is entirely for the benefit of the public that's here and to demystify this, but please correct me if this point of information is wrong. You're about to see council vote the consent agenda forward. That's because our understanding is that we're voting on two things, and this is, my understanding, the packet totally confirms this. We're about to approve a resolution that moves flood mapping forward that has nothing to do with the issue that you're here to talk about. We're also about to move first reading of an ordinance forward. That doesn't mean the council thinks that we should pass the ordinance. It means that we're moving the process forward to then have a public hearing at the next meeting where we'll actually have a chance to talk to staff about this, where there'll be another public comment specifically on this ordinance. So you're about to see a bunch of people vote for this. That doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to vote for it on second reading. We routinely vote for matters on first reading without intending to vote for it on second reading. I'm sorry, I know that's a little convoluted, but I just wanted to try to demystify that since I assume you all don't come to every city council meeting. And that's what's about to happen here tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Low. Mr. Kirschbaum?
If I could add one more comment that would help with that clarification. Typically, our second readings are scheduled at the next meeting, two weeks from the first reading. That is not what we're doing in this case. We have it on calendar for December 9th, specifically so that there is an opportunity for us, and we are actively trying to schedule some sort of an open house event at which we could have discussions with especially affected neighbors, as well as consultants, to try to talk through some issues before it comes before you on second reading on December 9th.
Thank you. Counselor Sinks.
Thank you. I am so appreciative of all of the work that you've done and your process, and we certainly want to have you back. Counselor Low, again, stole what I was going to say. And so, yes, we'll vote on this because it just gets the ball rolling, and we're not saying, yes, we want this to happen. There'll be so much work done to clarify everything, and, you know, visiting and open houses and so forth. So thank you for your work, and we want you to come back with the same and contact. So I'm Ward 1, and I'll be happy to talk to you and visit and make an appointment to come to your place, et cetera. So again, I'm voting yes, doesn't mean, as we stated, that I'm for it. So, thank you.
Okay, and seeing no other hands up, we'll go ahead, and council, please enter your All right. Thank you, everybody, and that passes 10 yeses, zero noes. And then we move on to Phase 2 of our non-agenda public comment this evening, of which I have no one signed up for. Do we have anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak to city council this evening on issues that are not relating to tonight's agenda? All right, we'll go ahead and close second public comment, and we do not have any general business this evening, so we'll pass forward to that and actually move on to our council reports. So I'm thinking, let's mix it up a little bit tonight and start with Ward 3.
Was getting ready for it, frantically pulling my calendar up. Ward 3 is not going to have a ward meeting in November. We will be back in December. But I did want to highlight something pretty exciting. Oh, gosh, now I'm going to get the date wrong. The Belmar, Colorado skating rink and tree lighting is going to be happening on, I believe, Friday, November 22nd. Counselor Low, please correct me if I said that date wrong. And they will be having a show with a whole bunch of kiddos who will be skating, and it's such a fun time to open up the Belmar area and the plaza and the skating rink and everything for the holidays. So would love to see everyone there. Oh, and here we go, I did get the date wrong. It is the 23rd at 6:00 PM, so there we go. And that's all I've got.
I was also looking for the date. Thank you, Counselor Stewart. I have no report, yes, we're not doing award meeting or award breakfast. I think we're going to do award breakfast in December, so stay tuned for dates on that. Boomer was a great time. There were so many people from Lakewood that had amazing costumes, a lot of genuinely scary five-year-olds dressed up in all kinds of slasher villains, and a lot of cute ones, too, in Belmar. So Boomer was a great success, and yeah, that's all I've got for Ward 3 report tonight. And happy Halloween. There's candy up there from my husband if anyone wants to help themselves to a piece before they leave.
Ward 4.
We just had a Ward 4 meeting, and the police chief was kind enough to join us. And for those of you who were able to attend, we thank you very much for doing so. We don't plan on having a Ward 4 meeting in November. I'm meeting people individually for coffee, so if you want to share something in person, feel free to let me know, and we'll get together for coffee and some group coffees. We tried doing scheduling coffees, but we've been overwhelming each of the coffee places when we just do that. 60 people is too much for a coffee shop. The city's having is a little bit mundane, but for those of you trying to get rid of your leaves, we're fast approaching that time. The city has, from November 16th through the 25th, at their greenhouse, they're accepting leaves and leaves only. Don't try and sneak in some branches. And we have Dia de los Muertos at 40 West. It's coming up, was it Friday, Saturday? Saturday? November, I think it's November 2nd. So look for that. Go to the 40west.org for the actual date. The first. All right.
Ward 5.
For those of you that may consume some of the Halloween candy, don't do it after you've brushed your teeth. It's not a good combination. We had a really good ward meeting last week. We had representatives from Metro Water Recovery attend, and it was very informative, fascinating stuff. I had no idea the amount of, they process 140 million gallons of water daily, and they do a fantastic job, and they've innovated a lot from a technological standpoint. So if you ever have an opportunity to talk to folks from there or attend a tour, the tour was highly recommended. So we also had a successful shredding slash metal recycling and electronics recycling event last weekend at Westgate Elementary. So for those of you that may have missed it and weren't aware of it, it will be, they do it twice a year, and it's a great little event, and they also collect food donations for the food bank at Westgate Elementary, which is really a good opportunity to support the community. Our next ward meeting will be also, we're changing over to Saturday at 9:00 AM on the January 25th and February 22nd at Westwoods Community Church. So hopefully, we'll see you there.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say we had a great ward meeting, as Counselor Nystrom said. I just wanted to say nice to see all of you. Sorry, I've been gone. I was out last week with a cold. And then a week before that, I was taking my nephew to his first trip to Disneyland. So that was a fun time. Had his own Halloween terrors as well. Anyway, so just wanted to say good to be back. Looking forward to, yes, we're doing our ward meeting, the next one in January. We're moving our meetings back to Saturday, where I think they'll stay with a lot of popular support for that. And thank you. That's all I have.
Ward 1.
Yes, thank you. Just quick thanks to, we had great office hours last week, so appreciate everyone who took time. I want to thank Ms. Solman and all of the neighbors who've been keeping this topic that's happening in Ward 1 top of mind, and the countless emails and the back and forth that we've had about that. So looking forward to continuing that conversation. Now you know that that continues on December 9th. I believe I misspoke in our email last night. Also, Halloween this Thursday, what a great time to practice driving 20 miles per hour in your neighborhood. So just watching out for little ones who are out there trick-or-treating. And then finally today, just a reminder, hope folks get out and vote. This would have been the last day to put it in the mail, so please drop it off at your nearest ballot box, and that's it for me.
I get to then say that we're having a combined Wards 1 and 2 ward meeting on November 16th. I just turned that in, so it'll be published on the city website. So November 16th at 1:30, and that'll be at Lakewood United Methodist on, what, 14th and Balsam. So that'll be exciting. I wanted to also highlight the 25th anniversary of the Cultural Center and the great concerts that are there. And so there is a fun one that I'm going to attend this Friday, No Buntu. I don't know exactly how to say it, but they've also asked the counselors to give a little bit of an introduction, and Counselor Nystrom gets to do that this Friday. So you can check out the different concerts that are available, and I highly recommend them. Thank you.
Ward 2.
I'm going to do a little bit of detail-oriented cleanup for Ward 2-based things that were just talked about. So Dia de los Muertos is First Friday. Typically, our Arts District does do a Dia de los Muertos-themed First Friday around, like, whenever it is for Halloween, like, post-Halloween, early November. But this time, it is actually on the real holiday, which is the first, and this coming Friday. There's also specifically going to be, I know, additional, like, street performers and things particularly over by the Theater on Teller, which is going to be really great. And then our November ward meeting, shared with Ward 1, which we're really excited about. Lakewood United Methodist Church is on 14th and Brentwood, just so everyone knows that we are talking about the Lakewood United Methodist Church that you are thinking of. And then I want to thank everybody who came to our ward meeting this last Saturday. It was a really great discussion. Folks brought a ton of really good questions. I think I followed up with folks as needed, but reach out, of course, if not. And the regular scheduled Neighborhood Association meetings start again next month, so in October, I think three of our Neighborhood Associations had their annual meetings, which meant that their, like, times were different. So I'd gotten a couple of different emails about folks being... So I'd gotten a couple of different emails about folks being, oh, is it still this one Saturday, is it still this Thursday? And the answer was no. In November, they go back to normal times, including a Morse Park Sustainability meeting that happens next week. Now I'll turn it to my co-counselor.
Thank you all. Appreciate everybody's having me on Zoom today, in the interest of public health, hoping not to spread germs. And just like Counselor LeBure, it's a cold and flu season, y'all, so keep yourselves safe, get your vaccines, et cetera. So just wanted to thank my co-counselor for holding down our ward meeting this weekend as I have been sick, and hopefully will be better for the Dia de los Muertos celebration this Friday. And also just wanted to highlight, on Halloween itself, there will also be an Afro-Caribbean Halloween celebration called El Cuco Fest at the Three Legion Theater at 1650 Teller Street. And there will also be a horror film shown. So it should be fun, and hope to be with you all in person next time.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. And I will bring us home this evening. We just wrapped up the very lengthy process of budget season, so I'm excitingly now working on planning for next year. And with that, I'd like to report that we have our 2025 planning retreat date set at January 31st and February 1st. So for those residents that would like to put a bug in your ear to your councilors about things that you might like to see within our 2025 goals, now you know, we will be getting together at the end of January to start those discussions. And I am very excited to be joining my Ward 2 councilors on Friday night for Dia de los Muertos. I will be volunteering at an undisclosed location. I'm not sure how we're going to get hints out there, but I will have a prize for the first person that finds me up along Colfax for the festivities of the evening. So with that, everybody, we have no more business to turn to this evening, so we'll go ahead and join the meeting. It is 8:08 PM.